Meeting will now come to order for the Fayette County Commission. First thing we're going to do is pledge of allegiance. Counselor, would you lead us?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. First thing I want to go over is our new Zoom meeting participation policy. Because we've had some issues in the past, we had to come up with a policy that would be fair to everyone and make sure that everyone's participating the same way. The following policies will be observed for all Fayette County Commission meetings available via Zoom. Fayette County Commission Zoom participants are expected to conduct themselves as if attending a meeting in person. You must sign in. All Zoom participants excluding phone-only participants will be required to give fully the first and last truthfully name themselves for admittance to the meeting as if they were attending in person. Phone participants due to Zoom's limitations, phone-only attendees can be identified by their phone number and will have limited availability for interaction during the meeting. If needing to interact during a meeting, it's advised that you either attend on Zoom or attend in person. All participants will be initially placed in waiting room for name verification. Participants will not be able to change their names once they're in the meeting. All participants will be automatically muted and will only be able to unmute if requested by the host. Once remuted, you'll have to ask again to become unmuted again if necessary. Now, this is the big one. The chat feature will only be available with the host. Any inappropriate or irrelevant chats with the host will result in removal from the meeting. The chat is part of the public meeting and therefore becomes public record. Any questions on our Zoom meeting policy? Again, if you're going to come into the Zoom meeting, you must present your first and last name. Otherwise, you will not be allowed to come into the meeting. Ruth, is there anything else?
The other side, I like to talk about any support.
Yeah, it's your support letter policy.
That's the main one. We want to deal with search.
One question I have. We previously talked about requiring people to activate the video feed if they were going to address the county commission. Is that going to be part of the policy? Because I don't think it just reads that way.
Oh, it doesn't read that? I thought I heard him say that.
No, I didn't see anything about video.
Yeah, I agree with that because if... So we can verify the identity on the other side.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, if they were here in person, we would see their face.
Yeah. So if you're going to address the commission, you must have your video activated.
So with that, when the commission moves to adopt this, moves to adopt that amendment?
So we wanted to read it upfront and make sure everyone understands, and if they needed to make changes, they can do it at the same time. So we'll be voting on this later on in the package.
Well, especially if anybody who has... Because I don't use Zoom that much.
Yeah, I'll just say. Vote on it now.
Vote on it now and get done.
Okay.
Okay, well, I move that we adopt the Zoom policy with the amendment prosecuting attorney recommended.
I second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to adopt the Zoom policy or the Zoom meeting participant policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I want to add to that if I can, to start today, now. Can we make sure that... So that we know then it starts now? I don't know what you said, though. I just want to make sure.
It's on the agenda, so I think... It is on the agenda, so I think you can start whenever the commission sees appropriate.
Okay.
And just to reiterate, if you don't have video, you can call in. But people should identify themselves. That was something like when I was editing the minutes for the record, where we have a member of the public in here that maybe nobody knows, and we need to identify them for the record. Because the public has the right to know everything.
So to be clear, if you want to attend a meeting and simply listen, you don't need to... You don't need to take video and call in by telling them you're going to address the commission. That's a traditional requirement.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Next, we have exonerations, combine and divide land and refunds or... Do you have any combined and divide lands today?
There... Yes, I do. I just didn't... I have two of them.
Okay, you want to go ahead and grab those, and that way we can get those done at the same time?
I make a motion to approve the real estate exonerations that Mr. Young presented for the commission today.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the real estate exonerations. All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve to combine or divide and segregate land that Mr. Young presented for us today.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion to divide and segregate land. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, and we have a refund for Mr. Eldon Critchley for $90.65. I move that we accept and approve this refund.
I second. Okay, we have a refund for $90.65. Been properly motioned, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, that's right. It's a refund.
Refunds or two copies?
Two copies. All right. Thank you, sir.
I have one question. Do these... We're doing a... I don't know. Am I supposed to leave this with you, Ruth?
It's divide and land.
Yeah, it's kind of court.
Divides.
Kind of court splits is what we...
Did you sign your part of it? I need to ask a question about my...
Did you sign your part of it?
No.
Because there's a spot for you to sign on there, so you can go ahead and sign it. She isn't there?
And you're always on it. She is always on it.
There's a refund there. I don't mind. That's your refund.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve first half payroll of the 30th.
I second that.
Got a motion and a second to approve...
You may quit.
Second half payroll. Wait there.
I did the seven twenty-three minutes. I must not have just attached them.
Oh, I didn't see them. I might not have attached something. Okay, we can get them.
Isn't this second half payroll?
I'll pull it up and check it.
Okay, we've got first... It says first half on here, so I said first half. It is second half. It's in the middle.
Yeah, second half payroll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ruth, anything to...
Last number would be the second half.
Okay, well, first... Okay, so the first half payroll will be done on the 13th.
First half of August.
First half payroll.
I'm not picking. I'm just trying to...
John will let you do it.
Okay, I make a motion to approve first half payroll through the 30th. Is that right?
I second it.
On the 13th. 13th, I'm sorry. Gosh.
Can we just approve the payroll already?
Yeah. Okay, we're going to start all over again. Okay, we have a motion, a second to pay everybody tomorrow. All those in favor?
Aye.
The 13th... Oh, hell.
No, not the 13th, not tomorrow.
Sorry.
The 13th, I'm sorry. Yeah, we are the Three Stooges today. Okay. I need a drink.
I'm going to blame Holly over there.
Yeah, it's all Michelle's fault.
It's all Michelle's fault.
Okay. Anything on vouchers and invoices, Ruth?
Oh, the final payroll, the one I mentioned.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions about them?
I didn't see anything. I wanted to question.
No, I didn't have any questions.
I make a motion to approve vouchers and invoices.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve vouchers and invoices and pay our vendors. All those in favor?
Aye.
It must be what it is.
It is. I told you to call me if I'll shut tomorrow. It's Saturday.
Okay. It's your turn next. The meeting minutes.
Okay. Yeah, I still have... The 23rd I had, so I'm just going to get those printed. So can we move on past that real quick?
Yep.
And we'll get those.
Okay.
I'm just checking my file here and make sure.
Approve estate settlements?
I move that we approve the estate.
Well, I don't know if we have any.
They're on my desk. It's... You do. They're on my desk.
Oh.
How about we come back to that and let... Because we're running late, and I told them maybe till nine or five, because they have another meeting.
Okay, who's saved?
Energy RDA.
Yeah.
Ms. Jenna.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Good, well, okay.
You're doing all right.
It's... You know, changing from Friday to Wednesday has really got us...
It might take some time.
We're a little discombobulated.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I emailed you guys the scope of work and the timeline. I just wanted to, like, fill you in a little bit on what some of that looks like, give you some dates, give you an idea of what the first meeting will be here, and then I had a couple of questions. So the first one, you'll see, like, the project team has selected House of Levine as the contract of planning firm. They've got a lot of relevant experience. They have done plans for comprehensive plans for Benningville, Arkansas, and other places in Colorado. They understand tourism and the impact on the community, and also rural and declining populations. One of the things I really loved about House of Levine, and I think Molly expressed interest in that as well, is the DIY kits. So they have these kits that you can log into the community with, where individuals would be empowered to use their time with other groups to survey people that may not come out to the meeting. And so that works really well for our community because it is so widespread. Individuals may not have to have to, you know, whether that's distancing or not. And so you'll see on the timeline that the firm will be here for their first trip on August 30th through September 30th. They'll be conducting individual stakeholder interviews with organizations like NPS, UBS, GSA, CoHeritage, et cetera, and they're trying to gain the understanding of the area's geography. In addition, one of my requests today is going to be a meeting with the commissioners, with the commissioners, the commission staff, region board, and Energy RDA in zoning to have a working meeting, and that would be on Wednesday, September 1st. I emailed Amy the request yesterday, but I know she was out of the office, and I see I'm related. So the second trip will be September 13th through 17th, and there will be a big time commission presentation, and then four visioning workshops. So the second question I wanted to ask you all is, they have proposed doing the visioning workshops in two ways. One would be population-based, and one would be districts. I assume you all want to do it by districts. If we did it by population, you know, the smaller communities wouldn't be addressed as easily. And so that's the second question that I had for you all. And then during that second trip, they'll be doing immersive outreach, business drop-in, schools, industry, public facilities, and then they'll be conducting listening sessions in that trip as well. So first ask is for the working meeting with the commission on Wednesday, September 1st. And so that's number one. And then the second question is, do you want to... I assume you want to do it by districts. Is what?
What time is that?
Nine to 11:00.
Okay.
Is that... Yeah.
Yeah, September 1st, nine to 11:00. Yeah, I have a court thing at 11:30, though. So where's it going to be?
I mean, it could be wherever we want. I mean, here or whatever.
Well, actually, it doesn't matter. I think I... This I can do by telephone.
Okay.
I think here wouldn't give us a parking issue.
What was that?
Here, we don't have a parking issue like we do in downtown Bethel.
Yeah, well, fair. Yeah. All right. So that works for you all?
Yes.
And then for the visioning workshops, would you all rather do it by district or by population?
I would rather do it by, I think, by district. Is that cool?
Yeah, but you said there are only four.
Right. And so if you all would like to do additional visioning workshops, that's where the DIY kits will come in. And so if the county wants to go out into communities and hold walkable meetings, they will give the tools and resources for you all to do that. And so if that's something that you want to do, they said that they would hold a training session for the commission and any staff that wanted to do that.
We do...
Yeah, we talked about that yesterday.
We do want to do that. We've already... We've already identified... I'll have to find in my notes, but we've already identified the areas that we want to...
Okay.
At a minimum.
Okay, so I'll set up some kind of training session with them. They basically have an elevator pitch, so that it's unbiased and, you know, everyone's receiving the same information kind of thing.
Okay.
Do we have the list of places we're going to be going to?
I think Mr. Taylor was talking about... Yeah.
Yeah, I do have a list. We came up with it at another... At a previous meeting. I just need to find it.
Okay. Because we owe it to the county to do way more than four meetings. I was thinking 12 to 16.
Yeah, we're going to do planning. That's... Yeah. I do have a list in my notes. I just have to find the notes from that.
Awesome. So they'll have... They should have the DIY kits finished by this week, and actually, they can have it prepared for them on Saturday as kind of a kickoff to see, you know, get an idea of how it works. If not, they'll have it next week. But, you know, we are kind of playing catch-up. And so otherwise, I think things are going really well. The project team has met twice, and we've had a good response from most of the team. We've, you know, got representation from a couple of different areas, which is great. And then we've got time representation. So do you have... I'll have any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, what's up?
On key groups to engage, the eighth one down, it says protected areas. You need to add Hawx Nest State Park and Camp Washington Carver in Cliff Top. It's actually right beside Babcock.
So this is actually from the firm, that scope of work. And so you said, I can send this back to them. Hawx Nest State Park, and what was the other one you sent? Sorry.
Camp Washington Carver. That's located in Cliff Top, right beside Babcock.
Yeah, so if you have any... If you have any questions on the scope or the timeline, I'm happy to send any of those back to me and the planning team. Anything else?
No, I just want to say, I think I told both commissioners, this firm is awesome, I believe. Awesome.
I agree 100%. I'm super excited. It really got together. Great. Well, you all have my number and email if you need anything. But yeah.
Very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I just... Amy, I just sent the 23rd minutes. I had... I just wanted to go back there and make sure the copy that's saved was the right... Was the edited copy, and it was.
Okay, so do we have estate settlements? Bye.
Bye.
I know this lady.
And that's why I said it's the saddest part of the day.
I know. No, I knew her when I was a little girl. She... Her husband, who's executor, worked with my mom. I knew them really well. She took care of us, and my mom had a car. I move that we accept the estate settlements.
I second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the estate settlements. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're still... We'll wait on that one.
So can we back you to number two on Exhibit A? So we got an idea.
Yeah.
Michelle, please.
So that is in discussion of decision adoption of amended bylaws, the reappointment to Bridge Day Commission, Becky Sullivan, Kenneth Paul, Wayne Michaels, and Jerry Long. And then maybe EMS advisor seat for amended bylaws.
That's Jerry Long. Yeah. I was involved in these meetings and discussions, and Jerry Long is the first appointee from the ambulance community, but Jankir does provide the Bridge Day support. And I wasn't at the meeting where they actually created the position, but I was involved in discussions about it before that. And I do recommend that we accept all of these. These people are all active members of the commission. Of course, Becky runs the meetings and takes good care of everything. And I wanted to let you know, we are working on the getting the lines painted. I just need to get with their report about the... We discussed our last meeting.
Wow, ready to go.
And so I move that we... Do we need to do them one by one, Anthony, or can we just...
One is a group.
Okay. Well, I move that we accept first, create the position for ambulance services on the Bridge Day Commission. It's ex officio.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to begin a new position on Bridge Day. It is a EMS advisor seat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I move that we accept, reappoint the folks recommended to the Bridge Day Commission.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint the people to the Bridge Day Commission as listed on Exhibit A. All those in favor?
Aye.
As for future reference, one of the reasons we wouldn't be able to do this is because some would be approved and some wouldn't.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So I mean, to approve as a group, the only stipulation is it would have to be all in paper or all against.
Okay, then the bylaws?
That was... We... That was the first thing we voted on.
Okay.
Yeah, that was... The bylaws was just to create that position, so.
Okay, so number two is gone. Okay. Yes.
Court signature, if I have to sign this much again. Where I have... We're toward our... I just get punched up. I went into this Aurora Ice group. This... I just read the email you sent us about the vaccination. For the public's information, there's a vaccination event at the Chamber of Commerce, CVB, on Friday, this Friday, April 6th, or August 6th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And there's going to be a truck called Aurora Ice. It's going to be in the parking lot from 5:00 to 9:00.
They're good.
Sells shaved ice. I'm not excited. I love shaved ice.
They're good, and they always have a lot.
They always have a following.
Oh, and while I'm saying that, there are a couple of other things going on this week. There's a... I can't remember what it is, because I didn't put it in there, but there's some community event in Smithers this evening at 6:00. And then at Midland Trail High School tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00, they're having Trail Gate.
I thought it was Friday for Smithers.
Friday, Smithers, 3:00.
Yeah.
Oh, it got changed?
Yeah.
All right, well, maybe I have a different one. Let's see. I'll find it, but let's take your all's word for it. You said Friday from 3:00 to what?
3:00.
Yeah.
And that one's a leadership.
It's also a value that's in there celebrating their 30th anniversary, who is 30 and is off state. So there's a man have a leader there. He lives in the church class.
Oh, okay. So what are the times again? You said 3:00 to...
I believe it's 3:00 to...
Free? The first how many?
50 people are vaccinated.
The first 50 vaccinations get free shaved ice, everybody.
Yeah. Please.
At the Chamber of Commerce on Friday, 5:00 to 9:00.
Okay, we're done with that. Now we're going to something that's been going on since November the 25th of 1992. So do we have any representative from Oak Hill on the line?
There's a phone number that could be...
It could be.
Hannah Beck.
It's supposed to be him or Brian Parsons, maybe.
Not for the city of Oak Hill.
Yeah, he represents the city of Oak Hill.
Yeah.
He's a city attorney for Oak Hill. I think Ansted, Smithers, and...
Montgomery, for sure.
What's the phone number? 4389?
Yes. Hey, ma'am, is Mr. Hannah Beck there?
He's got...
Okay. That's what you call over and over again.
Yeah.
Awesome.
I agree 100%. I'm super excited. It really got together. Great. Well, you all have my number and email if you need anything.
Very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I just, Amy, I just sent the 23rd minutes. I had, I just wanted to go back there and make sure the copy that's saved was the right, was edited copy, and it was.
Okay, so do we have estate settlements? Bye.
Bye.
Oh, I know this lady.
Yeah, that's why I said it's the saddest part of the day.
I know. No, I knew her when I was a little girl. She, or her husband, who's executor, worked with my mom. I knew, I knew them really well. She took care of us when my mom had a heart attack. I move that we accept the estate settlements.
One second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to, to accept the estate settlements. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're still, we'll wait on that one.
So can we, Becky, to number two on your exhibit? So we gotta get it out.
Yeah.
So that is, in discussion of decision adoption of amended bylaws, we appoint Mr. Bridge Day Commission, Becky Sullivan, Kenneth Paul, Wayne Michaels, and Jerry Long. And then maybe EMS advisor seat for amended bylaws.
That's Jerry Long. Yeah. I, I was involved in these meetings and discussions and, and Jerry Long is the first appointee from the ambulance community, but Jankir does provide the Bridge Day support. And I wasn't at the meeting where they actually created the position, but I was involved in discussions about it before that. And I, I do recommend that we accept all of these. These people are all active members of the commission. Of course, Becky runs the meetings and takes good care of everything. And I wanted to let you know, we are working on the, getting the lines painted. I just need to get with their report about the, we discussed at our last meeting. And so I move that we, do we need to do them one by one, Anthony, or can we just?
One as a group.
Okay. Well, I, I move that we accept, first, create the position for ambulance services on the Bridge Day Commission. It's ex officio.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to begin a new position on Bridge Day. It is a EMS advisor seat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I move that we accept, reappoint the folks recommended to the Bridge Day Commission.
One second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint the people to the Bridge Day Commission as listed on Exhibit A. All those in favor?
Aye.
As for future reference, one of the reasons we wouldn't be able to approve this is some would be approved and some wouldn't.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So I mean, to approve as a group, the only stipulation is it would have to be all in favor or all against.
Okay, then the bylaws?
That was, we, that was the first thing we voted on.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, the bylaws was just to create that position, so.
Okay, so number two is gone. Okay. Yes.
Court signature if I have to sign this much again. Where I have, we're toward our thirties. I went into this Aurora Ice group. This, I just read the email you sent us about the vaccination. For the public's information, there's a vaccination event at the Chamber of Commerce CVB on Friday, this Friday, April six, or August 6th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And there's going to be a truck called Aurora Ice. It's going to be in the parking lot from 5:00 to 9:00.
They're good.
That sells shaved ice. I'm not excited. I love shaved ice.
They're good, and they always have a lot.
Oh, and while I'm saying that, there are a couple other things going on this week. There's an, I can't remember what it is because I didn't put it on here, but there's some community event in Smithers this evening at 6:00. And then at Midland Trail High School tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00, they're having trail gates.
I thought it was Friday for Smithers.
Friday, Smithers, 3:00.
Yeah.
Oh, it got changed?
Yeah.
All right, well, maybe I have a different one. I'll find it, but let's take your all's word for it. You said Friday from 3:00 to what?
Yeah.
And that one's a leadership. Oh, okay. So what, what are the times again? You said 3:00 to? What's with your food truck?
Yeah, they'll be there from hockin' on in the first.
I'll get some free, the first how many? The first 50 vaccinations get free shaved ice, everybody.
Yeah. That place.
At the Chamber of Commerce on Friday. 5:00 to 9:00.
Okay, we're done with that. Now we're going to something that's been going on since November the 25th of 1992. So do we have any representative from Oak Hill on the line?
There's a phone number.
Um.
That could be.
It could be. Him or Brian Parsons, maybe.
Not for the city of Oak Hill.
Yeah, he represents the city of Oak Hill.
Yeah.
He's a city of, city attorney for Oak Hill, I think Ansted, Smithers, and.
We don't know who he is.
Montgomery, for sure.
What's the phone number? 4389?
Yes, um, hang on. Is Mr. Hannah back there?
He's got.
Recording and recording.
That's what you call over and over again.
Yeah.
I was in trial when I talked to him yesterday, so. Might still be. Okay.
He's unneeded, so.
Amy, were you able to see this order?
Hey, Bill, are you on?
I am.
Okay.
Bill, can you give me background on this real quick?
Yes. That, Ms. Holly knows some of the information, too. It, it seems like several years ago there were some annexations by the city of Oak Hill. Everything was done. The minutes are in front of you and all that. The only thing that failed to happen was an order be, be signed and placed in the order book. And Michelle, do I have that, is that a good summary?
Yes, sir. Okay, well, I move that we approve the order.
A second.
I compared the property description to the orders, the flats, they appear to have been, I think.
Yes.
Minutes clearly indicate that everything, appears everything except for preparation and signing of orders.
One second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the lingering order from November 25th, 1992. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Bill, it's done.
Thank you all very much. Nice seeing you all.
You too. Take care, Bill.
Okay, thank you all.
We'll send them the original. No, the court.
All right, Ruth, we can go into your stuff now.
Well, I can tell you that the next thing we're gonna do in GST, I want to postpone. Like, I want them to come and do a presentation, and I'm not real happy with them right now because they're not fixing some of our issues, so.
Okay.
I have no desire to.
Do you have a postponed date for us?
I'll say on the 25th, as long as.
He can be here at 10:30.
Okay, he can be here.
25th of, uh.
August.
August.
All right, I move that we postpone the GST item till the 25th of August.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone the 9:45 discussion with GST, where they could be here on August the 25th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we go to yours.
So the first thing is the letter to the Supreme Court for reimbursement for rent to the family well-judged on the amount of $33.75.
I move that we pay the rent.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the letter to the Supreme Court for $33.75 for rent. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is discussion and decision for the regional trail alliance appointment.
Okay, we have one, we have one plate, one person to appoint, and we actually had two apply. Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve Andy Davis.
What was the question? Actually, for these, for both of these appointments, I'd like to go into, move that we go into executive session to discuss.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
You cool?
I'll fix that, Allison.
Thank you.
So that's for number three and four.
Number three and four.
We can, we, I figure we should go through these other items.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get.
Maybe just hit them when we go into executive session later.
Makes sense.
Okay, so we'll move on to the Fayetteville, oh, Ruth's gonna get there.
All right, so we'll go ahead and do number five then. And that is the request from Fayetteville Pre-K to eight Principal Melissa Hara for the commission to sign an MOU for the Board of Education using the memorial building as an emergency evacuation shelter if they have to evacuate the school.
Did you review that, Anthony?
Yes. It's, my understanding is this is already been placed for a while.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I don't trust everything is already in place for a while. Just because we've always done it that way. And I, as I was doing the minutes, one of the things that came up, and I think this might have been, I don't know if you were at that meeting or not, but there, there were health, a couple of healthcare facilities, especially one for like a nursing home or something that wanted to relocate there as well. My concerns were about that. I want to make sure that liability issues are covered and, you know, I don't know, the memorial's such an old building that, you know, that we have all the power outlets or whatever that such a relocation would need for people who were infirm or, you know, might need oxygen plugged in or, you know, things like that because, because their temporary oxygen, depending on the emergency, might not last them. So I, I was just concerned about being, the county being a relocation site for people who would have a higher set of needs and. This one is. This one is, but we had another one.
Well, actually, the Board of Education took care of that one, too. They were giving them access to Oak Hill High School.
Okay.
But this is for specific.
This one's for the pre-K, I mean, for Fayetteville Elementary, which I'm fine with, but it, it just reminded me of, when I was going through the minutes, that we've had other requests and some of them, you know, there are greater considerations on whether we can accommodate people who, you know, have certain, you know, medical needs and stuff.
I'm, I'm not looking at anything on the nursing.
It sounds like, from what John said, that, that, that particular request went to the Board of Ed and they, and they approved it. But I was concerned about, because of the old building and because of some of the leaks and stuff and, you know, just that, because my mother was on oxygen and I knew that that stuff doesn't last long and I didn't know if we had enough outlets or the capacity to plug enough things in, you know what I mean?
Right.
To, to, you know, handle the needs of, of that whole population. But anyway, sounds like it's moot for now, but just in the back of your mind.
Make a motion to approve.
My second.
Okay, we've got a motion, the second to approve allowing Fayetteville Pre-K through eight to use the Fayetteville Memorial Building in case of an emergency. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so the next item is.
Oh, yes.
This is a discussion and decision to allow prosecuting attorney Anthony Silberti to initiate the transfer of Bumer Ballfield to the Fayette County Board of Education. So if y'all vote on it.
Oh, I'm in.
It's just some paperwork.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's simply a function of preparing a deed and that we can assign it and.
We want those transferred.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, to authorize our prosecuting attorney to go ahead and initiate the transfer of Bumer Ballfield to Fayette County Board of Education. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's what I said. Yay.
Okay, the next one. So the, I think it's Terry from the gun club came back and said their initial notification was to vacate the premises by August 31st, but given the continued discussions, he would like something in writing. Don't like, saying they don't have to vacate or whatever. Anthony and I discussed it, but y'all need to approve doing some type of letter or something to them if you're gonna let them stay. They have been working with the sheriff and I think Mooney and Purdue, so.
Basically, here's the way this works. If you terminate a lease, it puts the impetus in the hands of the tenant to them vacate the property. If they don't vacate by the deadline and they continue to occupy the property beyond the deadline, then the landlord has the option of filing suit to have them evicted. So my suggestion would be, I could write them a letter and basically say that as long as, as long as negotiation cooperation is continuing between the gun club and the sheriff's department, that the county commission will let them, the county commission will promise that you don't initiate any type of people receiving your victim from the property. And then that gives us the ability down the road if something comes up. We, we have the option of filing suit at the end to a victim or we can obviously give them additional time to get out if that's where we end up.
Can we not put a deadline on a MOU or something? I don't want that to go on indefinitely because, I mean, one of my biggest concerns, the sheriff was my biggest concern, but, but another concern of mine was the public. You know, it's public, it's a public range and the public doesn't have access, so.
Well, and I just don't want them to say, they can negotiate and they can negotiate forever. There's gotta be something in there, in my opinion, you saying negotiate. I can say I call up and say this. I'm just looking at the other side.
It's, I mean, I was for you guys, so if you guys would like a deadline in there, I think the current deadline is August 31st.
I don't mind giving them 60 days. I just want to put something finite on it.
Okay.
For an MOU, unless an MOU is entered into by.
So I can basically put in the letter that we'll not take any legal action against them for an additional 60 days or 60 days after the August 31st deadline.
Pick where, whatever. I mean, I just want to give them 60 days. Yeah, an additional 60 days, an additional. No, no, from the deadline.
Okay.
The deadline. And also, Anthony, the, the plan should be, should include access for the public. So if you would add that. They should get back on our agenda and pitch us the plan for public access that they would facilitate.
And the MOU just include the plan for public access. All right. You guys, you guys need to vote on that?
Yeah, when is our first meeting? In November?
It's, I think it's on the one meeting. I feel like it's 15, 16.
17. It's November 17th because there was a terrorist group in Greece that's 17 November, and that's why I, I remember. Anyway, yeah, I know. But anyway, so I, I move that, that we ask our, our prosecutor to issue a letter with the conditions we discussed and add this to the 17 November agenda to review.
A second. Got a motion, the second.
Wait, stand by, stand by. Maybe we should review in October whether we're going to execute. What's the second meeting or what's the?
The 27th.
Okay, let's.
Yeah.
So I'm in my, I'm in my motion to the 27th of October rather than 17 November.
I'll second the amendment.
That's what we brought out, 60 days.
Yeah, so we can, they need to be on our agenda before then to let us, or by then, even that day, to let us know what's going on so we can approve an MOU.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, that we will discuss this on October the 27th, which gives them almost their 60-day extension from August 31st. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Testing you.
They, they changed a couple parts of my hearing. I think they're so much better now.
I need to go get mine tuned up.
It was done Monday. I was like, wow.
Because they have to. You go to Bellton?
No.
They changed that.
I think so, okay.
Pam.
We'll get.
Klein, Whitmore, Beckley Hearing Center.
Or they at least have to use the desktop.
But the little part that has the microphone on it.
Well, would they have to?
Listen to it. She had to replace both of those because mine are 40 years old.
Okay.
And I couldn't hear a darn thing. You know, about every phone has that, all that crap.
But if they, if they get on the phone, but it's like, we had this caller, so if that, they can't.
No, and as part of it, basically.
Do I let them in? Can they listen that way?
Sure. Yeah, they can listen, but as I understood what we did on that, the, if you're going to access the meeting room, you're not gonna be able to, you can listen to what's going on, but you're not gonna be able to address the commission.
Because there's no way to verify that that's who it is.
But the reality is, is two years ago, the way we addressed the commission was to physically come to this building.
Right.
Come to this room.
Does Zoom pick up on caller ID? I'm just curious.
I don't know enough about it.
Do our sip, do our.
I think that the phone, the phone numbers are generated by Zoom.
Oh, they are?
Like, well, when it comes in, I, I don't know that they're typing their numbers in.
I think Amy's correct.
We can.
They show up. It's like, I know when Danny was on our Zoom calls because it was Danny's number. Yeah, they're, they're.
But it doesn't show a name.
Their actual number shows up, but I'm just wondering if there's a way for them to verify or something. I don't want to, I don't want to put too many restrictions on because some people just aren't going to have enough cell access to get, like, I know when I'm driving sometimes, you know, like, when I'm driving. I didn't say that. When sometimes I'm somewhere where video isn't working very well. I take that back, prosecuting attorney, but when I'm somewhere remote and my, my FaceTime or something doesn't work, the video doesn't work, but my call will work or my text will work. So the less data you're trying to transmit, the, the better your stuff will work. So I'm, I think we ought to explore, anyway, some way to verify them because if, they'll come up on caller ID if they call the courthouse or if they call, you know, one of us or something. We'll be able to verify their identity by the, what? Ruth is smirking at me for the record.
You're identifying broadband issues.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
Yeah.
And you were speaking hypothetically.
I was, definitely. If I'm, you know, driving and FaceTiming. Anyway, so.
Somebody else is driving while she's FaceTiming. That's what she meant to say.
That's what it is.
That's why we use my middle name for driving.
It is hands-free, though.
Hands-free.
It is. I have a hands-free thing right on my thing.
Okay, let's get in here.
Okay, so the next one. So Amy's gonna redo that Zoom policy to add whatever you, this is what it currently says. So based on what you just said, tell me if you want that changed. But the same, that same item also talks about support letters?
Yes.
And requiring anybody that wants a support letter from the commission to attend in person or via Zoom to answer any questions. And we want to move that so it's from the 9:00 to 9:30 slot, so people don't have to wait. But any support letters will be addressed at that time.
We could actually do those right after the pledge. Yeah, what, yeah.
And they have to be very specific, like what it's for, what the deadline is, if the commission has specifically required a supply letter and a draft support letter. So Amy's not writing your support letter in form.
Yeah.
And they must be either on Zoom or in attendance here
Yep.
to answer her questions. I'm gonna tell you, it's fine line, it's fine. I'm really pleased that things going on. I mean, it, they're pretty, pretty fine, too.
Give us time.
Seems to me you want a letter of support, I think you're submitting. Seems to me you want a letter of support, I think you're submitting.
If you want a letter of support, you, you need to be interested enough to be here or be on Zoom. I mean, it's just simple as that.
And if we have multiple letters of support, are we giving them 15 minutes to do the presentation?
No, five or less. I'd give them two minutes.
Two minutes.
Couple of specific ones that would.
I would say though, that based on what's in the policy, all the questions should be answered by the time the application gets to.
I feel like you should make that call.
Okay.
Okay. If somebody wants to feel that, then fine. But, but I think another thing is we might want to just put in here that, you know, last minute support letters may not be approved. Like, because I don't, I don't want, and Regent Ford, if you're out there, I, I don't want to get into a habit in Women's Resource Center and all of you that we've had to have special meetings to approve stuff. That is not acceptable. Like, you need to get on it and get your deadline set in your calendar like everybody else, get on the agenda. Because this entire body should not have to meet because of somebody's poor organization. I'm not saying that's always the case, but, you know, your poor organization is not our emergency.
It does say by noon two weeks prior to the request.
It does, but I think you ought to put something in there about the implications if they miss the deadline because there's been a habit of accepting, you know, stuff, you know, and we just, oh, sorry, we have to have an emergency meeting because somebody didn't have it together. And I'm, that's not okay. I mean, so the implications are, you know, missing, missing the deadline is, and especially if it's an organization that repeatedly misses deadlines, it's possible that, you know, it won't get approved.
So late submissions will not be accepted?
That's what I'm looking at right now.
Well, this is.
Yeah, okay.
submissions will not be accepted.
Well, that works. Allison just put late submissions will not be accepted.
Sure. Unless they successfully beg Ruth and Amy to.
I'm getting too early.
But I mean, what do you guys think?
I agree with you.
I mean, now.
I'm good. Yeah, I like it. I do too. And Ruth is capable of handling those situations.
Oh, yeah. And so is Amy.
We've been calling her Ruthless Ruth.
I think we ought to just call her Ruthless. But let's not put it in passive voice. Let's say the, the commission will not accept late submissions.
Okay. Here, you're going to redo that?
I don't read what I put because I didn't put what I just said. Amy heard me. She's on it.
Amy listens.
That was funny.
Okay.
Um, we have the 23rd minutes now too.
All right, good.
No?
No, she's got to fix that one thing.
No, we don't.
Okay, then we'll just.
Give it a minute.
Okay, we'll give it time.
Bring back every minute.
So to speak.
Yeah, I want like four or three minutes. There's going to be a couple.
Yeah, what we're talking about is that I thought we had already decided on the Boomer Ball Field, so I, I amended the minutes to reflect that from the meeting we last discussed it. And then when I saw it on here, I walked over to verify. I was like, didn't we decide this? And I was corrected that no, we hadn't. So we have to fix that.
I think we talked about it.
Voted amend.
We talked about it, we didn't vote again.
That's what, that's what threw me off. I thought we had, because we all kind of agreed and I thought when we agreed that we had voted, but we hadn't. So they've got to fix that for us.
Okay, so let's take a five-minute break, for those who need it. Time to do that.
This is JR.
Yes.
The 15th, but I asked them to go ahead and come early because I knew that a couple of things were going to be moved along. So if you want to move in.
Is the conference office the one that's through?
Tony?
So now it's messed up. The only printer I have is two.
Where's our normal technician at?
Jimmy testing.
Amy was supposed to be working on that printer at the beginning.
Is Amy back?
Now, all my problems this morning were software systems. They worked. He.
But why was it logged off?
I got logged out yesterday trying to put my password in. He needs to get in there and say, but I still can't get the software's website. Sorry, I'll go back to my emails and see if we're.
Are we muted?
No.
I have opinions.
Amy, will you email me a copy of this?
Okay, we're back from break. Those breaks are necessary for us, first to clear our head and second to clear our back platters. So we just finished on the policies and the support letters. Now we're up to Anthony to see if he was able to get the letters completed. So we'll hold off on that one. And JR, we're going to let you go.
No, right here at the...
Where is the black... Oh, it's over there.
Good morning. For those of you that don't know me, my name is JR Davis. I'm a WBU faculty member and a 4H Development Extension Agent for here in Fayette County. I just wanted to kind of introduce myself. I've only been here for less than two years, so I really haven't had the chance to get out and meet anyone. I come from Clay County originally, and I'm really enjoying Fayette. But then moving to a new county during a pandemic, I've had a lot of time to get out and explore. Get in my car and drive around. I've become very familiar with towns with Meadow Bridge and Anstead, going from one end to the other. I really enjoy Fayette so far. So I'm here to talk about what we do with 4H. West Virginia 4H is unique. We serve youth ages nine to 21 years old. And I've been in 4H as an active participant since I was nine years old in 96, and I'm still getting strong. It's what I've always wanted to do here. And now that I'm in Fayette County, I'm trying to network and just get used to what all 4H has accomplished here. I currently serve on the Board of Directors for the Fayette County Family Resource Network, Fayette County Read Aloud, Fayette County Prevention Coalition, and I was on the Board of Directors for the virtual website, Fayette Connected. And that's basically for volunteers. So here in Fayette County, we have five 4H clubs, and those are in the towns of Meadow Bridge. We have one at Divide Elementary, our Fayette County 4H Team Leaders, I meet at Midland Trail. We have the 50 Caliber Shooting Sports Clubs, I meet in Oak Hill. And then we have the Fayette County Outdoor Adventures Club, which is also based out of Oak Hill. We haven't been able to do a lot over the last two years. As an Extension Agent, I'm a literal extension of the university.
Can I stop you real quick? What was the last one you said?
The Fayette County Outdoor Adventures Club.
And where's that?
It's based out of Oak Hill High School.
Okay, what about the Valley? I didn't hear the Valley mentioned in here at all.
The Valley is an area of the county I feel has been neglected in the past, and I'm trying to find people to do some work in that area right now.
Okay. I suggest you start with me reaching out to the mayors of Montgomery and Smithers because they are really proactive and trying to get things done there.
We have a youth health educator that works in our office, and she's been very fundamental in helping get the Smithers farmer market up and starting. So I'm always searching for new volunteers because without volunteers, I'm not able to do much.
Right. Well, maybe even the, you know, there's still a school down there, thankfully. K through eight, I think. So maybe talk to whoever's principal. Sorry, I don't know, but that might be another approach.
Yeah, the Valley is definitely an area that I'm looking forward to possible Energy Express in the future. And I definitely want a 4H club there. You know, being from Clay County, when Golly Bridge High School closed down, half of them came to us, the other half went to Valley. So I do have friends that grew up in that area. I've been trying to reach out and say, hey, if you know anybody who wants to be involved, have a reach out to me.
There's also Mayor of Golly Bridge, too.
Okay.
But yeah, if you guys would make an effort, appreciate that. That area could really benefit from this program. We didn't have it when I was growing up down there.
Okay. There are a lot of areas in the county that I feel have not been reached in the past. I don't know whose fault that is. I know that my position was vacant for over a year before I got hired in. So I feel like some things fell off the ropes a little bit, but I'm here to try to get them back up. Some of the areas that I'm really focused on are youth financial literacy. If anybody's ever participated in the reality sport curriculum that WBU offered home, I've also partnered with the West Virginia Treasurer's Office in the past to help to get a life program at middle schools. Those are some big things that I hope to see brought back. Hopefully, this coming fall, visitors will be allowed back in the school, and I'll be able to start making those connections. Youth literacy education-wise, we do host Energy Express every year. I am the county contact. This will be my third year serving as county contact because I was the extension agent in Wyoming, the third year of 14 years here. So I have done this all before, just getting used to a new county and a new day and age and trying to figure out how I can use my skills that I learned in 4H to become resilient and adapt to ever-changing day-to-day. Now, I do want to say that we have a lot of things coming up that we plan. We are hosting a Back to 4H event on August 28th at Fayette County Park. This is to show kids, we are back. Our clubs are coming back to meet, just trying to educate people on what all we do. You know, the four H's stand for head, heart, health, and hands. And the mission of WBU Extension is to enhance the development of all ages. Now, we are here, I primarily work with you, but I deal along with adults as well. I just came back from a rural volunteer management conference in Charleston that was conducted by Volunteer West Virginia, just trying to determine new strategies on why people volunteer, how to recruit new volunteers, and how to continue the networking process that I've been through. So I'm pretty excited to see where we can go in the future. I have a lot of friends that grew up right here in Fayette County who have been lifelong 4H members, and I want to give back to the program that helped raise me and to continue to provide the opportunities that I've had to this.
Could you recap for us, which program specifically are you, is Fayette County involved in right now? Like which?
Okay. As of right now, Fayette County does have a shooting sports club, and that teaches kids, it specializes in air rifle and air pistol. Just teaches kids responsibility, how to get out there, and how to socialize. I know in years past, they have competed in competitions with other 4H clubs around the state, and I've recently just taken ownership of that club, and I'm now a club leader for them.
Do you do firearm safety training as part of that?
I do not specialize in firearm safety, but I do have a contact at WBU who can teach handgun safety. I also am a co-ordinating diversity alum, and I do have connections down there as well.
Only handgun safety, though, not just firearm safety? I think that'd be an important... In this area, because especially the, and I'm just going to say it, hysteria about gun ownership, I feel like it would be great to have, because we, I mean, we have kids, you know, have their hunting rifle in their car in high school. You know, you grew up in Clay, so you know. And, you know, I think that that is an important part of education for kids who have firearms in the home. Like if you can offer that...
Especially in rural areas.
Yeah, because I have nieces and nephews that are, you know, by the time they were five or six years old, knew. Like, you know, they knew what to do. They knew how to shoot.
Well, it's interesting, you know, I know that different counties have different personalities. So when I worked in Wyoming County, they had the Hatfield McCoy Trail. So I got certified in ATV safety because I knew a lot of the kids in that area were ATV riders. So I would go around to the schools and teach them proper equipment to wear, where the clutch is, what kind of gas and mini that you should be using on your ATV.
We have, we have people here in Fayette County who are firearms instructors, too. I don't know if they're... I know Jim Sizemore is, I know Shannon Prince is. Jim works in the probation department right across the hall. Shannon is, I see, to the Oak Hill Police Department Sergeant, I think. But both of them teach firearms training, so you might be able to use our own research on that, too.
Our Shooting Sports Club is typically met at the JR OTC Building in Oak Hill. And there is a member of the police department, Nick Green, who has helped with shooting sports in the past.
Good. Well, yeah, he's good. And so do you, is it always air rifle and pistol?
Yeah, they only do air rifle and pistol because that is the only thing that the club leader is currently certifying.
Say, if you get them on 22s, I can donate some ammo. I have like 10,000 rounds. A stockpile during the Obama administration.
We'll see what the JR OTC building has to say.
Stop with that face.
Kick somebody by the way.
I'll tell you something real quick about JR. I was driving to North Carolina. My uncle had just passed away, and we had to have an emergency conference call to bring JR on. And he was just finished one club down in Wyoming and was coming here to do, start another one really quick. And we were all very impressed with what he had done. And Brian, Brian talks about him all the time, so.
Yeah, I had just finished up the Wyoming County 4H camp, and I was here about two days later to be interviewed for Fayette County. So I was turning around and coming right back from another one. It wasn't interesting. And then I was here for just a few months before I felt like the world shut down. So I was still trying to get out and meet people, and it's curious because I'm used to seeing people on my computer screen. So a lot of the people that I'm meeting now, I'm seeing in person for the very first time.
Let me ask you something else. Have you engaged with team court with ICE Flaver?
Yeah, so I did volunteer with the Adventure Days program that the Fayette Prevention Coalition and the ICE Flaver have been working on. I was in the Anstead location a few times. And then I'm also a volunteer for team court.
Okay, so you want to go ahead and tell us the rest of programs? You said Shooting Sports Club.
Shooting Sports is one of the clubs that we currently have. The other one, the biggest and newest one, is the Outdoor Adventures Club, where my goal with 4H participation is to show kids there are other activities you can do that don't have to necessarily be your bad choices. Get out and enjoy the opportunities that Fayette County has to offer. That group is going whitewall the wrapping so far. I have a mountain biking, disc golf. Just trying to utilize all of our resources here to get kids out and about.
Have you engaged with the Boy Scout camp on this at all?
The Beckley Summit, I have not reached out to. I've contacted one individual who never responded.
Sounds like them.
Well, listen, before you get on that now, I just heard yesterday they have a new director up there. I know Bill here has worked with me on stuff, but I heard very good things about him and that he wants to meet with us individually about his plan to open the summit, give more people access to the summit department with the community, and that he, he bought, actually bought a house in Beckley and isn't using their housing. Like, he's committed to the, to the region. And he was speaking specifically about Fayette County with Jenna Grayson, who told me about it, so.
Proof is in the pudding. Proof is in the pudding.
I know, I know.
And we haven't had any pudding.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, like, he's new, so let's give him a chance, but.
Well, I have met with Jenna Grayson. So earlier, earlier this year, I met with the 4H Extension Agent in Raleigh County as well as Jenna, and that was when she was working with the WBU Science Adventure School. We are going to be trying to conduct programming with all sixth graders in the county after Beckley Summit.
Well, she would probably be willing to facilitate a meeting or put you in contact with this, this new guy. But, but I, I would like to see, I mean, this sounds like a really good way for the summit to show, you know, it's interested in investing in the county by giving your organization access to some of the activities for the Adventures Club.
100%.
And if they, if they do or don't, would you please come back to the commission and let us know? Because I haven't seen nothing. Sorry, sorry.
Keep you all updated. One of my personal goals is to start attending more of these meetings to familiarize myself with some names and faces. I've heard all of your names before, but I've not been able to attend a meeting before. And I definitely want to start attending some of the Board of Ed meetings as well. It's all about networking right now with somebody who considers themselves a new to this position to try to get out there.
And please do keep in touch with us because if there are things that we can do... Are these the only two clubs? Let me just start with that.
No, so we do have three other community clubs. And that's the Meadow Bridge Clovers, because they do a lot of community service down in that area. And our team leaders have put up seven blessing boxes throughout the county. We do have one here in Bayville that's over at Franklin. So you may have seen some of those around. We're just trying to give back to the county that raised these kids up. So I believe that enhancing the development of all ages not only pertains to youth, but we're also here for the people of Fayette County, adults included.
Okay. And what's the other one? You said the Clovers?
We have the Oak Hill Team Leaders that are based out of Midland Trail High School. It's the Fayette County 4H. And then we also have the Divide Elementary Blue Jays, and they meet after school.
And what, are they all community service organizations?
They are, yes.
Okay.
I recently had somebody reach out to me to start a potential 4H club at the Trinity Learning Center.
I haven't heard of that.
I'm also not familiar. I'm trying to get more information. They are somewhere located out in Nickelville and Bayville, so.
That's it.
He said the church at the end of the church.
That's a new church you should go off.
All the way at the end.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know where that is. I just don't know what it's called.
Well, I did have, I had someone.
It's a different name for a program than it had. I can't think.
Someone emailed me and said, hey, we attend this school. We're interested in starting a 4H club. They're actually supposed to be coming to my office sometime next week to discuss.
We also have, just so you know, we have a, I learned this week, a Montessori school here that you might want to partner with. We call it the Co-op, yep. But it just got Montessori status.
Yeah, we have two students who attend the Co-op school that actually attended our 4H camp this past year.
Now, have you heard of that bike park? I forget what it's called. Y'all remember that? I told you, I think I remember what that bike park that's in the Mount...
Can't remember the name.
Mount Hope area.
I remember we discussed it.
That would be a cool place. There's like a lot of cool kid stuff out there.
Yeah, well, I will say that after attending the volunteer conference this past week, I met an individual named Alex Burr. He works for Harmony for Hope, who is trying to get a lot of revitalization down in the area. And I also think it's an area that since the school's closed, it's often been neglected. So I definitely want to go and try to do some things with his organization and see if we can both help each other out a little bit.
I have a request on behalf of my team court because I'm, I'm one of the attorney mentors in the team court. I would like, because, you know, what they do is, this jury appears, they sentence whoever the respondent in team court is, whoever's in trouble. They, they come up with a sentence, and some of the sentences, you know, they almost always inevitably have to be on the jury in team court. But if you could get a list that we can use for team court of activities, you know, community service activities in these different areas that the teens could use to choose from if they're going to use that as part of a sentence, depending on whatever the allegation is, that would be great. Because I, I don't think they have a, kind of a, I feel like they need to have a bigger list of options to choose from. And community service is, in my opinion, one of the best ways to, you know, get kids involved and out of trouble, meet new kids and that sort of thing.
Well, I helped out with the verse two mock trials back in team court's first study. I attended the first hearing, and then since then, I became a club leader of the Shooting Sports Club that meets on Monday evenings.
Oh, okay.
So I have been a little bit absent, but I'm very familiar with what their purpose is. I'm, I'm very close. I've known Diane Collison, who's director for about 12 years.
Well, if you could just work with Diane and just make sure she's aware and come up with something so, so they know that these are options, you know, if, if there's somebody up in Meadow Bridge. You know, I know Meadow Bridge High School is participating in it. So, you know, if somebody from up there has a violation and they go through team court, that that's a possibility so they don't have to drag down here all the time. Like, I don't think it's fair to make them participate in team court if their parents work until, you know, 5 o'clock up there and can't get them down here in time. I mean, I want them to have more options and sensitize them to that sort of thing. But this is my personal self, and if you would text me your number and identify yourself, I'll get back to you on that organization for the bike, where the biking stuff is and with the contact for the summit.
Well, I pulled out a recommendation, I believe it's from you all. I connected the check table. If you could...
Yes, that was me.
We have a curriculum called the Bop Den Life Skills, which is all about goal-setting, smart decision-making, which in my opinion goes along with the headache, the headache for better thinking. But it's goal-setting, decision-making, and kind of self-discovery. So upon the fall, when school starts back and Youth Reporting Center gets some students in there or some youth, I hope to work with them on that.
Okay, and I'll add one more to that now that I'm bombarding you. But we now have a family treatment court here, and there may be some cause to get some, some of our kids who are in foster care involved. And because sometimes I've represented kids in cases that, that are struggling, you know, with issues. I actually sent two of my clients to Youth Reporting Center, I think I told people, but because they got in trouble at school, even though normally they wouldn't get sentenced there, I made them go. But, but I want to make sure I connect you with them, too, so, you know, they're aware so the leadership of team court can, as a coordinator for team court, can get with you on that stuff.
Uh, like I said, it's all about networking right now.
I'm making a list that I'll text you stuff on once you let me know.
All right. Do you mind having any questions for me about what I do or my background? Well, I hope to attend more of these meetings and keep you all updated on what all 4H is doing for Fayette County. And I hope to see you all in the future.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, JR. Appreciate it.
What did I say? I would give you Summit, Team Court.
Anthony?
Yes, sir.
Did you have a chance to work on those letters for the dilapidated homes? Where we're going to send them, like the same thing you did down in Smithers? We're going to send them the letter.
I'm going to give you firearm instructors, too. There's another one. Well, we'll think of it.
You did the letter down in Smithers. Where you sent it to the homeowners?
Right.
And you gave them an option of either signing it over.
Well, I mean, that's just a form letter. I mean, if you guys give me the go-ahead, if you give me the go-ahead and give me some specific properties you want to work on, we can get those out.
Okay. Angela?
I love this. Abby has already texted me the name. It's Camp Royal is the bike park.
Yeah.
And, and Patrick Sterrett is the Boy Scout Director. S-T-E-R-R-E-T-T.
John, you're talking about the letter that basically says...
Yes.
You don't want to have to deal with us. You can clean it up or sell it, transfer it to us if we are involved in that.
Right.
Yeah, that's just, that's just a form letter that... I can just use the same line I used for the others in Smithers. Taylor, I mean, because basically the Smithers Dilapidated Building Ordinance is modeled, at least in part, on the counties.
Hey.
So we can just use the same letter.
Okay. Did you guys hear, Anthony?
No.
Okay.
I'm making notes.
I've got it. Anthony, would you explain it?
We have...
Dumb it down for me, will you?
No.
I'm just kidding. No.
We have a Dilapidated Building Ordinance. One of the problems, one of the problems we're dealing with is, at least in this juncture, if the county's going to take the steps to demo and dispose of these dilapidated structures, we're going to have to put the bill with the hope that we can later on get reimbursed for the property. What we did in Smithers was is we would target properties, find out through the tax office who owned them, and then I had a form letter that basically said, you're in violation. We're going to come out, I mean, I'm summarizing, obviously. It was worded a little more professionally than this, but, but you're in violation. We're going to come after you. You're looking at facing the full wrath of the city of Smithers. I mean, obviously, it would be Fayette County in this instance. And then basically give them the option of, you can either take the steps to demolish and dispose of the structure. If you don't want to pull with it, if you don't want to deal with the expense, I'll be happy to prepare a deed. You can sign the deed and transfer it over to us. And then lastly, if you're not going to go for option one or option two, then we're going to come after you with our Dilapidated Building Ordinance. So that's essentially what the letter says.
So I have a, so I have a question. You know, with that one property that the flood people want us to take over, that we don't want to take over right now because of all the water? Like, how are we?
Is this down in Mossing?
Yeah.
It's down in Scarborough.
How are we going to, so?
Well, on the way, on the way to Mossing, right there by the...
Right, right.
... convenience store.
Yeah. Oak Hill.
Yep, so.
Right below, right below Oak Hill.
But my, my question is, you know...
But that's, there's not a building in that park.
No, there isn't. But, but in the same vein, liability-wise, I'm just thinking, you know, the tractor nuisance stuff, that, you know, once we take over a property, I feel like we need to be ready to take action on it.
Well, I mean, under, you know, my suggestion is, is to the extent possible, the building should be secured so people can't get into it. I think if we take the steps to secure the building, we're going to limit our liability. But like you said, Allison, I mean, we, we should be prepared to, in fairly short order, if we acquire ownership, go forward with the demolition and disposal. And then, of course, once we do that, we can then turn around and potentially sell the property to get at least part of what we spent on the demolition disposal back into the county's account.
Let me ask you a question, Angela. I was waiting for your pause. On selling the property, does it have to be like a bidding process? Or can we put a price on it and sell it?
And the answer is yes.
Okay.
We can do both. I mean, the West Virginia Code says we have to auction the property.
You've got a minimum on it?
I don't like necessarily auctioning property because I think it limits your ability to get a fair market value. But you can set parameters on the auction such as reserving the right to reject all bids, reserving your right to set a minimum bid.
Yeah, a reserve value.
So, Tom, to answer your question, we can set parameters so that the county's protected. We don't have, we don't have to simply put it up for auction, and then if somebody bids $10, they walk away with the property. We can, we can set restrictions on it.
Okay. Now, my next question is, we're looking for funding to do land banking. I guess we've talked about needing funding, correct?
Yes.
I never had that discussion.
Well, again...
But we don't, we don't have a land bank ordinance at this point. You know, do you guys, do you guys understand the premise behind that?
Could you explain it to me again?
Certainly.
Thank you.
There's a statute. It's in chapter 31. I looked at it this week. But the gist of the land bank ordinance is it gives municipalities, it also gives counties the ability to come up, to create an organization that's run by a board of directors, and it gives that organization the ability to manage property within the county. One of the perks on it, for example, is if a property comes up for sale, a tax sale, we, we get priority.
Very interesting.
It, one of the problems with tax sale properties, and I'm not going to mention any names, but there are certain limited liability companies that operate here in Fayette County. They will frequently buy properties with buildings on the property. The buildings frequently are in various states of disrepair, and then they in turn will either rent or do a rent-to-own deal. And it's somewhat troubling to me because what ends up happening is, is they will sell these properties with the requirement that there's a significant down payment and then with the stipulation that if you don't make your monthly payments, the ownership never passes. never passes to the tenant. It stays with the seller slash landlord. So they end up getting the property back and they just repeat this process over and over again. And, you know, I'll say it. I think they prey on people that have poor credit. I think they prey on people that are less sophisticated and don't fully understand the real estate buying process. And, and in the end, you have a building that's in a state of disrepair that never gets rehabilitated. It never gets renovated to the point that it improves. And over time, I think that the condition of the building deteriorates. So, one of the perks is that it, it moves us to the front of the line if there's property that we want to acquire and it's up for sale. I need to double check on that because there was the last time I looked at that portion of the statute, there was a sunset provision in there. And the legislature would have had to have extended it. And that may not be in effect anymore. But it gives us the ability to acquire ownership of property and manage the property.
That's very interesting.
Here in Fayette County.
Glad you looked over it.
That's the one that Huntington uses, right?
Huntington, yeah, actually Huntington.
I have a friend who worked off of that one.
I actually, when I was doing some research on this, that several news stories came up about Huntington's use of the land bank ordinance, of their land bank ordinance. So it, it gives us another tool to deal with dilapidated properties. But insofar as getting back to the letters, like I said, if you guys give us the go-ahead and if Angela can identify some specific properties, I can start cranking out those letters.
Because the letters normally come from our office first, though. In the county, the beautification committee sends the letter first.
Well, no, what we're talking about, we're not talking about using the dilapidated building ordinance. We're talking about basically sending what I like to call an askygram. A letter from the attorney that basically says, you're doing something wrong. If you don't correct the situation, here's what's potentially going to happen.
So in addition to the ordinance letter, we send them down there in violation of the ordinance?
Certainly.
So we send a two, one from you? Okay.
Yeah, we, it's essentially a letter from my office that basically says, we're going to come after you if you don't.
Because ours does that. Our letter that we send them states that they can be daily.
I feel like that could be combined. I really do. Like, I don't feel like we need to send two letters.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the letter we send now tells them that if they don't do it, there's going to be a lien put on the property. So, and maybe I can give you a copy of that letter.
Not to, sometimes, though, a letter from the attorney.
Well, that's, yeah, my, sorry, but my suggestion was going to be that you send a letter and for your Angela.
But the ordinance says that the committee sends a letter. That's why we have to.
The committee.
Right, that's the way our ordinance.
But that, but that's to initiate, that's to initiate the process through the beautification.
So bring it towards the county commission. Her letter says that we have to send two no's before we get to put the paper in the county.
Okay, but, but you're talking about the process that is set forth within the ordinance.
Yes.
What I'm talking about is just something completely outside that. It's trying to head things off before we get to that point. It's to basically try to get property owners to do what they should do and to give them the option of transferring ownership over to the county. And then, then if they ignore the letter, I mean, basically, one of two things is going to happen. They're either going to nail themselves at one of the options in the letter or they're going to thumb their nose at me. And at that point, then we would go to the beautification committee and work, work towards actually forcing their hand.
Would you send Anthony copies of those letters that you use? And in that way, just make sure there is no duplication between you, if you will.
But like I said, but Allison, it's, like I said, it's a, it's a form letter, so it's, it's simply going to be a function of changing the address on there. So it's, it's not going to be a lot of work on our part. It's going to require.
I just don't want us to send tons of paper, because if I got a ton of paper from somebody, I would, I hate it.
The initial letter, you know, and I actually, oh, I can't remember how many properties in Smithers where I basically got phone calls and they were, send me a deed. I don't want to fool with this. I mean, some of the properties down there, I still cannot believe some of the properties had been purchased by some of these local property, property management companies. And then some guy in South Dakota bought like five of the properties.
Oh, I know which ones you're talking about, too.
And I would, I would, I'm sorry, I refuse to believe that that guy came from South Dakota, looked at the properties. And I'm guessing the reason he bought the properties is they were all sold for very cheap. And that's because they were small lots with dilapidated structures on them and.
Is it possible for us, so, in case I'm missing something, if we were to take over a dilapidated property, could we auction it off as dilapidated and make a condition of the purchase?
Sure.
That they improve it? So can we try that as a part of it, too?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you could make it a condition of the sale that by X date, they have to demo and dispose of the building.
Okay.
And it's, you know, unfortunately, it's not necessarily a quick process. It's not necessarily a cheap process. I mean, generally speaking, the landfill will not take demolition material unless you have an asbestos inspection done. If asbestos is found, you have to properly abate the asbestos and you have to provide documentation to the landfill before they'll accept the demolition material. So, you've got to go through the whole asbestos abatement process first and then start demoing the building.
As far, as far as funding, I know we all, every time we mention this, we talk about funding. Now, I don't know whether we can do this, and I know some of the properties could be sold and some of them cannot be sold. But currently, the county owns properties. I guess, I mean, don't we?
Yeah, those are through the flood recovery. Is all, is all of them through the flood? Or is, is, what I understand, some of them, it, are, is not. So, I mean. As far as I know, all of them are through flood recovery.
None of them are from the last day. I know that one. Anything else?
Yeah.
None of them are through the dilapidated.
Okay, are we for sure that all of them was through the flood?
I don't know about flood, but I tell them stories. But none of them are through with dilapidated.
Okay. Because I was going to say, if the county presently owns its property, that could be sold and then funds can go into a fund. But I mean, if, if, if all of them are through the floods, which I didn't think all of them was, I may be wrong. How can we find that out? Do Kevin Walker?
Oh, once he comes back, yeah.
Who keeps track of what we own?
Well, I think. I think.
That's what I was thinking.
Kevin's only going to have flood properties.
Right.
He's not going to know.
I think Gabe done a search on, and I think I got a copy of it. Reason I was asking about it. A couple of months ago, he done a search, had James do a search on all the county-owned properties. And I, I think they were sent to me, and I guess I could send it to you if I can pull it back up just to see, compare it, if all of them flood, we can't sell them.
Right.
But, but if they, if they aren't, if some are, we can actually put them off for sale and use that money to fund. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. Do we have, is there any way to come up with kind of a general, and I know it won't always apply, but like a general cost of asbestos mitigation, or kind of for the average home that we might?
Seven to nine thousand.
So seven to nine thousand for that?
That's not asbestos. That's just the tear down. It doesn't have asbestos.
Well, no, I'm, I'm looking, I'm thinking in terms of the first two step, well, the first couple of steps. The asbestos and, and securing the home. You know, that's something we might want to ask Alan about. But, but the, the things that we would need to do before we start, before we decide whether to sell it with the house on it or to break it down. Well, asbestos.
We would know asbestos prices could be per foot if it had like shingles or tiding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think last time my dad got a price, I think it was four to $600 to come in to see, test.
To test it.
Just to test the place, just to test the house to see.
I'll say, you're talking about the mitigation. So, yeah, the testing.
The testing, I think. Is that what you're talking about? The testing? Yeah. I think it was four to $600 is what.
I actually went through this, if I remember correctly. We paid, I want to say it was $600 to have the inspection done, have the testing. And then we had, it turns out the house had asbestos side on it and paid $4,000 just to have the asbestos abated.
But if we just, if they sign it over to us and we sell it at X amount of price, that, the rest of it's on them.
I mean, as you're saying, that we make it a condition of the sale that they're demo and dispose of the building and certain. I mean, but, but as a practical matter, you're going to have to, I just don't know how realistic it's going to be to sell property with that kind of a string attached. It's going to have to be a situation where somebody really wants that property for a specific reason. Because you're not, I mean, logic dictates that you're not going to, you know, if, if the property itself is worth $10,000 and then you're going to have to shell out another 10 just to make the building go away, it's going to make somebody think twice about buying that property. But, I mean, at the end of the day, I think we need to, we need to at least try and see where we end up. I mean, of course, we have nothing that should not be gained. I mean, and we can always revisit the issue.
Well, why don't you go ahead and do a letter, send it to us, and then we'll send it back to Ruth if we have any additional things.
You guys just want to see what the form letter looks like?
Yeah, please.
But if, I mean, if we're going to create a land bank, what do we need to do to do that?
We have to adopt, we have to adopt the land bank ordinance. I'll have to get that drafted.
I've got some samples.
I drafted one for Smithers.
Okay.
So I can just pull that one up on my computer and tailor it to what the county needs.
Okay, sweet. How long do you need for all that before we get it back on the agenda?
When's our next meeting?
Twenty-fifth.
I should be able to have it. I mean, like I said, if the ordinance, the ordinance was already done, I did it for Smithers. So I'm not starting from scratch. It's just going to be pulling it up and making sure that it's required.
You probably have letters, too, don't you, for?
Well, yeah, yeah. And like I said, it's formed, the letters almost, the letters already completed. We just need to make it, make some minor changes to apply for the county.
Okay. Well, did you get that, Amy, for the twenty-fifth? Great.
Thank you, Anthony. We appreciate it.
Anything else?
No. Well, we, we have two other things. First, we need to approve these minutes. Amy, we'll just hold on to the twenty-third till the next meeting?
Well, I've got them printed. They're just in the other room.
Okay.
So do you want to do that? Go ahead and leave your executive session, because Amy has to leave.
And then Amy can come back and finish. Because I think Allison's going to have some updated policy for you to sign.
Okay. So we have minutes. Oh, here, you can tell us what the minutes are for. For what dates and.
So, we're caught up on minutes except for one that I couldn't find in my email when I was going through them. So Amy's going to resend it to me and we'll get those. And the, the ones, the ones that are still outstanding are from the April 20th meeting. And no, I don't smoke pot, so I wasn't stoned and didn't forget about the meeting. I didn't even know about 4/20 till I moved to Fayetteville, moved back here.
Until you moved to Fayetteville.
I did not know. I had a security clearance. Like, we don't, you know. I did not know what I was like, what do you mean? What's all about? Anyway, these are in short for the months of July and June. The meeting dates are June 3rd, June 4th, June 9th, June 11th, June 18th. And then July's are July 9th, July 23rd, and July 27th. And I applaud our county clerk and, and our Amy, our executive assistant for getting all these to me and, and helping me get caught up with this. So I knew that we accept the minutes for the dates I just named.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to accept the minutes for 63, 64, 69, 611, 618, 729, 723, and 727. All those in favor?
Aye.
All I need to do is sign the one for the twenty-third. All those are done.
Yeah, she's good.
All those are already signed.
Okay, so that we're approved. You can just sign it.
Okay, now, the last thing is the draft for Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. The only thing I see is the support letters, if we have any, needs to go up underneath the pledge of allegiance.
And we.
The pledge of allegiance? We're going to allege.
Hang on, because you're.
That's just funny. It's just.
You have to.
It's not funny that you messed it up. It's funny to think about what a pledge of allegiance would be. We pledge to allege a bunch of stuff.
That's okay. As long as they're picking on me, they're leaving somebody else alone.
Wait, so we don't have anything on our agenda except routine stuff right now?
No, it's, it's, it's grown just during the meeting.
Just during the meeting, you made it grow.
So Ruth's stuff, Ruth's Exhibit A is always there under the nine o'clock hour. We're just going to make sure that you guys take care of all that stuff in that half hour. Jenna Grayson's at 9:30 for a comp plan update for 15 minutes. The state treasurer will be here at 10. We've got Cannon from GST about the website will be here at 10:30. And then I put Anthony at 11 o'clock. But we can move him around if need be.
Why do we have 30 minutes?
It's just, so I haven't gone, I've changed some of them for 45 minutes, or for 15 minutes. I just haven't gone through and updated all of them. Everybody's 15 minutes.
Okay.
I'd say that guy, we're going to need 30 minutes.
Does Cannon need to be on here?
This guy will probably be, because it's going to be, the press is going to be here. The 10 o'clock thing is a big deal.
All right.
Cannon might need 30 minutes.
Yeah, I think he will, too, because Ruth's going to worry about it. I got some questions for him, too.
Now, who was that one again, Tommy?
GT, GST.
Oh, yeah.
Cannon can't answer my questions. My questions need to be answered before Cannon shows up.
Yeah.
He's wasting his time.
But I do have a 9:45 slot in there after Jenna Grayson now.
Why is, why is Jenna back on again this month? She just reached out.
She asked, she sent in this, yesterday afternoon, a list of dates she wanted to come and do updates.
I told her that every meeting that the, what, what we talked about is every meeting that the comprehensive plan team has, they will come and give you, give the commission an update.
Okay.
After every, and ours is, I think, third.
She was able to knock hers out in like five minutes. I don't think it's going to, I mean.
I like it.
Yeah, hers will be quick.
Yeah, so.
But we had to set up the 10 o'clock thing quite in advance. So anything else that comes up, we'll try to do.
Squeeze in before.
Yeah. But those two, that 10 o'clock, that, sorry, the 10:30 with Cannon, that's going to take 30 minutes at least. And then I just put Anthony at the end. But if he can do it in 15 minutes, we can put him earlier. I know. So 15 minutes it is.
He said, actually, he could just give it to Ruth.
Did Cindy, did Cindy Hart show up? I wonder if she knew where to go.
I had emailed her yesterday and I didn't hear of anything.
It was a commission meeting. Oh, she just texted me, yes.
Okay, so she's here in person?
Yeah.
Okay.
When we meet, hopefully she'll have a mask on, but she has a reason that we might need to mask up, too.
Well, I need the man, I need somebody to give me a mask.
I've got, I've got extras. I'm going to give you an Allison Ray Taylor for Fayette County Commission mask. I had 100 extra because I hid them. Hello? Welcome.
There she is.
Well, did you enjoy your drive?
I just now saw your text. I just now texted you back. Hi there, chauffeur. We are just about to go into executive session, so your timing is perfect.
Okay, I have one other thing for you. I'm meeting with people from the state on August the 10th concerning the creeks in Scarborough and Pax where they're flooding continually. So I'll have more information after the 10th.
Okay. All right. Did, did Brian Parsons have to come off of the? Is he on the agenda?
No, I mean, he's on there for the municipality thing for the executive session.
He is? Okay, I was just making sure.
That executive session has brief spots for doing things.
If we don't see him, we might want to check, because I know he's been in trial in Raleigh County and it might have extended. It was a long one. It was like over a weekend.
He always gets those long ones.
Or, or the sexual assault. It's, it's one of those. Might have been a sexual assault, now that I think about it. That sounds right, because I, I don't know that from Brian. I know it from reading it in the press and making the connection, because I knew he was going to be in trial. Then it might not be the one Brian's on. But whatever Brian's is, he was just starting like the last phase a year or two ago. But whatever Brian's is, he was just starting like the last phase a day or two ago. Yeah. So he may or may not. He may be brain dead too.
He gets some longer, that's all he'll be.
Well, no, they normally hear, these judges won't let them go more than a day to two days. I think it's rare, every once in a while they go three, but I haven't seen him go very long. Yeah, I mean, we go into executive session to discuss the items listed on the agenda and the items on Exhibit A, three and four that we talked about.
Okay, we have a motion, second, go into executive session. The time is now 10:55. We're going in Ruth's office, correct? Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Three twenty-four, twenty-fifth Street for Twenty-Fourth Street was where my aunt lived. And it's a haunted house. Okay. We're back in from our executive session. Tom?
I got it.
You want to throw it over to Ms. Taylor for this?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Taylor?
I have my notes here. That was, okay, I found them. Okay, so let me see. What issues? So we're just returning from executive session. We just had discussions with no decisions made with regard to the DRC staffing issue and the property in a municipality issue. So no decisions were made. We consulted with legal counsel on those issues and each other. And we're waiting for some more action to take place on those matters and more analysis. On, we spoke with our 911 consultant and just outlined some of our concerns for the center. And she has marching orders entirely consistent with what we discussed already. But since some of those issues were personnel matters, we wanted to have those in private session. No decisions were made on that matter either. So moving on to the Exhibit A appointments. Item three, the Regional Trail Alliance appointment. We discussed vote candidates. It's my view that Mr. Davis is the best candidate based on his experience, his position with the NRG RDA. But he has a whole lot of trail experience, too. I think Mr. Form was a very competitive applicant. But I moved that Mr. Davis be appointed to that.
My second, Mr. Davis. Okay, we have a motion, the second, that Mr. Davis is named to the alliance, what is it called?
The Regional Trail Alliance.
Regional Trail Alliance. Thank you very much.
And that's to join Bill Wells. So this is the two-year appointment that we were discussing.
The non-motorized Regional Trail Authority.
Non-motorized Regional Trail Authority.
Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Did you guys just have one for each of them?
Yeah, I had it prepared.
I was gonna say, that's officious. Thank you, baby. We just decided.
So did you do the same for the planning commission, too?
No, no. Yeah, we can just have them stamp those. So the next matter we discussed were appointments for members of the planning commission. Our considerations were largely based on prior attendance, position in the community, and experience with development and/or the planning commission, and location within the county because we want to make sure we have representation from each of those areas. As a result, however, we have only agreed on six out of seven at this time because we did not have a sufficient representation or number of applicants from the Meadow Bridge, Danes area. So we are going to reach out and try to find someone in the community up there who's not already. We're also trying to get away from too much redundancy on too many of our boards. So I should make that clear. While we had a couple of applicants who were qualified, we didn't have, you know, we did also don't want the same people serving on every single board in the county because that just could create some conflicts. So that said, the six individuals that we identified were Kevin Willis of Oak Hill, Carl Harris, who's a previous board member from Lem Ferris area from the valley, Joseph Ray, Oak Hill area, James Tucker from the valley, who was, and Joe Ray and James both are current planning commission members. Josh Davis from the New Haven district. Where did we say Josh lives?
He's out in what, Athenon, right up there?
Yeah, he's Fayetteville, but technically New Haven district. Ashton Critchley, Ashton has a Fayetteville home address, but Ashton has bought a lot of property that she is currently in the process of developing in the New Haven area over across the river. So those are the six. The outstanding slot is going to stay outstanding as we try to reach out to community members of Meadow Bridge and Danes and try to find a, somebody who's a business owner, developer, something up there who might be interested in serving on this board. So for the time being, we'll talk to Ms. Gerald about making sure, you know, we have a quorum and don't have a situation where there's a tie vote. But anyway, so I propose, I move that we appoint the six members that I just mentioned, applicants, to the planning commission and leave the seventh position open pending our inquiries of that area. Obviously, if we don't have anybody interested in serving from there, we're going to have to appoint one of the applicants that have already applied. But for the time being, I feel like we need to keep that one open.
Just making sure, yeah, a second.
Okay, before we complete the vote, is there, is there time limits on their position?
I think they're five-year terms, but you wouldn't want three of those people who are already currently serving.
Okay, so that, so that should...
We should be able to stagger the other four.
Okay. Well, let's, let's put the length of the terms for the new people on the next, well, we only identified, hold on, three more.
Josh Davis, yeah.
But once, yeah, once you get that other person, too.
Okay, well, why don't we just do it this way? Do we have a way to figure out what Carl's and Joe's?
She's trying to pull it down.
Oh, she's gonna pull it up now?
I'm gonna see if I can cut it quickly.
James Tucker. And for the public's information, too, we tried to get a, to our knowledge, anyway, we don't know everybody's politics, but we tried to get an even balance of Democrats and Republicans on this, given the divisiveness of the parties in this area. Though I don't think national politics should come into community stuff, but.
So I'm gonna need to do two people for maybe five years and then do one for a four year.
Say the original three, make them two years.
Well, they have terms already. They're already appointed.
Oh, that's right.
So we're gonna go with their remainder of their terms.
So that's a one year, a two year. You can do a three year, a four year, and a five year.
Who?
And then everybody be staggered.
What are Carl's, Joe's, and James's?
Carl's is up next year, excuse me. Carl's is up next year.
That's Mr. Tucker.
And Tucker's up next year also.
Okay.
And Joe Ray is up 23.
So he's got two years.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we need a three year, a four year, and a five year.
So just spread them out, just like you said. She said the same thing, too.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to recommend Ashton Critchley for the five, Josh Davis for the four, and Kevin Willis for the three. You fine with that? Okay, so let me start again. I move that Kevin Willis be appointed to a three-year term. Carl Harris, finish out his one-year term. Joe Ray, finish out his two-year term. James Tucker, finish out his one-year term. Ashton Critchley be appointed for five years. And Josh Davis for four. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, the second.
Oh, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Okay, so all of these, for some reason, expire at eight, three. That's yesterday. So should we just stick with that same date?
Yeah.
Okay.
So August 3rd is the date.
We have a motion, the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I need all prepared ones and just stay.
Yes. Okay, and with regard to the policies that I was editing, just for grammatic, grammatical correctness and not substance, you guys cool with me just copying you on that and them stamping us? Okay, all right, because I'm not going to be able to finish that until this evening or tomorrow, you know, next couple of days.
So that's gonna be the?
The Zoom policy and the support letter policy. And, and, and I'm also going to the courthouse COVID policy.
Yes, okay, cool.
Masking policy, basically.
Yeah, masking.
All right.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. There was nobody with their hands up. Good.
Hang on. Nope, they're raised it.
Okay. It's the end of our meeting. We'll be back again on the 25th of August.